So city council panel, if you would take the floor, please.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Waller.
Here, Albion, Michigan.
Lanell.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
And Harrison.
Here.
So here gathered to talk about the Albion first, whether or not we would find another alternative or just to get everybody's spot on what are possibilities for us moving forward with the city of Albion. We all have the packet of information, the document that was created initially when this was brought to the table. So really do you want to add comments or can open it up at a special time? I would open it up for discussion. I just want to reiterate that the study was requested, the whole this study session after the EDC board took the vote to no longer participate in the process of establishing Albion first. So I think just kind of to discuss how we came to that conclusion and what are next steps. So I would leave it in there for your discussion.
Councilwoman Lysit.
Could we potentially just ask, so there is a kind of a task where we put together that's here going, could we have then maybe kind of explain the process and how they worked and then kind of leading us up to when the votes for the board were taken? That we could just have an understanding of what was going on and what would be the votes that would be helpful.
Sure. So did we have like a spokesperson for the task force or? I was the one that organized the Zoom meeting, so I'm willing to, I did together some notes together, but I don't think any of us really sort of established who was the main lead on it. We really saw each other as equal to each other and representative of each board. So I'm Emily Correcty, I'm a member of the DDA and following the city council meeting, I believe in either late November, early December, I can't recall, when there was a study session, Mr. Lindsay presented MATA's model, had discussed whether it might be a fit for Albion. And so it was sort of a recommendation that the each board appoint or identify a representative from the board to then work together to have a discussion around with the support of Mr. Lindsay in trying to understand what would be some strengths or weaknesses, address or work to address some of the concerns that were discussed during that council meeting. So I was asked to serve on behalf of the DDA board. And so we met four times over the course from December into March, actually I should say February, late February is our last meeting that we had scheduled and then did not come together at that meeting. So we met first in December 16th and really had some kind of conversations, brought concerns, thoughts, ideas from each of the boards and information that was shared and discussed during that council meeting and tried to sort of establish our shared mission and our goal to work to understand some of the challenges that come with having three separate entities within a small community and what sort of benefits might be identified or found by entering into a service agreement. Not any sort of consolidation. It was, you know, really clear that because the DDA and the EDC as entities have some requirements and have to continue to exist, that that was sort of always the plan, but that it would be best or that the main framework would be that a service agreement might be entered into by each entity to a new entity and a working name was Albion first. So I want to put it out there. That was actually the least successful part that we were about even coming up with any sort of ideas of names. So Richard sort of put a placeholder name in the service agreement. So we didn't have to have new entity in everywhere as we read through the agreement. And so that was kind of our goal of our first meetings. We also walked away, each member had conversations with other municipalities such as Jackson that had come into a similar service agreement and then had also exited out of a service agreement or one of the entities. So we worked to understand what they found as being valuable and why they made your choice not to. We also enlisted the support and advice of some area DDA to understand how we could make sure that we were being excellent stewards of financials and how things might be set up on the accounting side of, to ensure that things like the beds and heads tax was used appropriately to continue tourism events and that those sort of waters weren't commuted along the process. That was feedback that we had heard during council sessions and as discussions. So we had those conversations, came back, shared multiple times. So we, a service agreement was drafted and shared by Mr. Lindsay around December 28th. And then we each had opportunities to spend some time with it, looking at it, picking things apart.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. May I ask at what point you started drafting a service agreement?
So we talked about sort of some of the three components during the first meeting on the 16th. And then Mr. Lindsay from the like framework of MATA's model took some of the components and then draft, did that first draft of the service agreement and distributed to the work group on the 28th.
28th of February?
December.
Okay. Okay. Go on, please.
Sure. So then second meeting was held on January 6th. Different aspects of this, like the nitty gritty within the service agreement. We had conversations about whether the service agreement could be extended to other area entities around such as maybe Albion Township or other, other smaller communities that might want to enlist the services or additional capacities that might be available within a new entity. And so we talked about within that, that service agreement, whether we should keep things broad enough to allow that to be possible down the way. So we were really talking in sort of big picture pieces along the way as we were working on the service agreement. We talked about board composition of the new entity, how to put in some transition numbers into the board and then, then through a matter of some individuals serving two years or four years to be able to grow it into a more mature board to support and, and sort of work to provide vision for the organization. And I won't go into all the detail unless there wants to be like sort of additional conversation. So, and then another meeting on January 20th. I think at that point we wanted to get the feedback from Attorney Prentice regarding how the, at the city's perspective and from, from the attorney's perspective, were we kind of getting ourselves into any place that we should not spend more time sort of getting into. So I heard Attorney Prentice, he sent comments back very promptly, very quickly. We had those back by January 21st. And then we had another meeting on February 4th where we reviewed comments, continued discussion. And I would say a big piece sort of along the way that was a challenge for the organization or for, for the work group was, the service agreement was really a very broad framework. The nitty gritty nuts and bolts were a significant challenge for the group to sort of envision what that looks like as being something quite new and, and not wanting to necessarily with reckless abandon or, or sort of without thoughtful discussion, just sort of like take on a role or a model of makeup and to really understand the places that each entity was in. So we had discussions regarding current staffing at, within the different boards. And I was, as I was reading emails, you know, we had a discussion about how we all sort of encouraged each other to put ourselves in a position where each entity would have current staff and be thoughtful about how that would look and that we shouldn't sort of, Herman McCall, who was the representative for the EDC, wouldn't be necessarily a hundred percent on him to be the only one to like have that thought process, that we should all be thinking about that and, and supporting her in understanding or thinking about what that would, would be like. It just had so happened to be that the chamber didn't have staffing at that point and the DDA has now had staffing for several years now. So that was a repeated topic of discussion of thoughtful, how do we sort of, my best analogy that I can sort of come up with was how do you sort of take one train such as the, the EDC that is running down the tracks, in progress, as project, is continuing to move down the tracks? And then you have a chamber that is slowly moving along because they had changed its leadership and their staffing. How do you begin to get entities sort of going and moving? And the DDA is sort of like a little in the middle of the way, so quite quick, to also continue to do that so that sort of the projects, the cargo could be offloaded without just sort of saying, okay, everybody stop, stop what you're doing, move things over. Because we all really acknowledged that was not the best use of anybody's time, anybody's talents. And, and so thinking through how the projects or new projects or existing projects, that turned to be a real stumbling block for the group to think about that. So in our last meeting, we actually sort of put together this, what we might phase, what each entity might phase into if entering into a service agreement for a project or some set goals with the new entity, what those might be in year one, in year two, in year three, or maybe even further on. And that was sort of the last thing that we discussed in our last meeting and we hoped to come back on the 25th or so, the 24th and, and have some real pieces that we could pick apart in there. Because we were having such high level conversations. It was a lot of what ifs and, and how do we do this? That it, we almost, we kind of felt like that we needed to at least put something down on paper to then start picking apart. And that was really the place that it stopped. That, the, that was, that was a significant challenge that sort of the, I'm not, I'm not sure of whether it's EDC or, or Mr. McCall had difficulty identifying whether it was new projects or existing projects that might be those first pieces that could be entered into with a service agreement with the new entity. So because we couldn't sort of get ourselves to even thinking about what might be a project that the new, you know, Albion first might take on initially, you know, we didn't continue to, even though each entity has sort of allocated funds to enlist the support of Mr. Lindsay to go all the way to the point of filing articles of organization and helping with the 5123 tax and debt status, that has, those steps have not been completed. What, what we're at right now is the service agreement in its current state. The last DDA board meeting that we had that we had reviewed these, the DDA continues to be in support and trying to think through that. And I actually don't know if you could ask Amy with the chamber, where the chamber currently is, but that's kind of at least an overview and some dates and topics of conversation that we had. If that's helpful.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that was a great kind of recap of what it's kind of inspired from the beginning to where we are now with a lot of detailed information that's good to bring back through pressure memory of how we got here today. Councilwoman Waller. I think Elva needs to introduce herself because we are live and everybody doesn't know who these people are though, that I've seen before. So.
Thank you, yes. And Emily, you want to start off?
Yeah, I'm like Correcty, Representative of the DDA.
I'm Richard Linsley, a representative of the EDC.
I'm Richard Linsley, a representative of the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce.
Raymond Barclay, Chief Housing Officer, Albion College.
Ed Haas, with the EDC.
Amy Craig, the President of the EDC.
Anna Norris, with the EDC.
Yes, Councilwoman Lysit.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Councilmember Waller, have a question.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Councilwoman Waller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say that I was in the meeting with the DDA when we, when I first heard about the Albion first program. And I did vote yes, but as the time went on and I started to do more research, actually when we were in the meeting, I did hear that transparency was not going to be too much available to the people. So as I went out and was trying to do my research, you know, is this a good idea? Did I do the right thing by saying yes? It just bothers me and I've said it once and I'll say it again, that the transparency is my problem. So with that being said, I do have one question. Whose idea was the Albion first? Who initiated this idea, please? Can somebody help me?
In all honesty, I'm not sure. I did not complete the initial conversation.
Who initiated the Albion first?
Mayor Abbotson or the VP of City and Drive.
I know that.
I, I can barely hear.
We're, we're not sure, Councilwoman Waller, how this conversation got started with the Albion first. That was before I was elected in. I don't know.
That was at a special, that was at a special meeting back in October, November, or again, those two months, not together in 2025, 2019, or 2020.
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty. I'm trying to think of when you were turning together. Cause I was on council then and we had, we had to come to, I think, two special, like one was a special meeting and one was a study session where Albion first was discussed because at one meeting, there were, there were actually the executive directors, like the leadership of each organization that had a leader. And then it was decided that it needed to be the board to have the conversation. And that's when the boards were brought in and they developed their workers. And that's what I understand that from them because this was made before the new council.
So, so the old mayor initiated this? Is that what you, is that what was said?
That Mayor Dave actually initiated it. I don't know. He was on, he served on the EDC role as, as mayor, but it was definitely on the council agenda and it was definitely a, a special meeting or a study session of the whole council. So.
I, I get that part. I just wanted to know who initiated, okay, who came up with the idea to say, hey, you know, this is out, this is going to be Albion first. So I, that's what I was kind of asking. But I know that we have held a whole bunch of meetings. So that's not my concern. I just wanted to know, you know, so I can have a better understanding and, and make the right choice right now.
I actually have a question around Kansas City tonight too, because that's been on my mind today. We, I received at least a full word of an email today concerning transparency as it relates to Albion first. I would like Mr. Lindsay to explain to you what the difference between transparency is with Albion first and the current, in the current EDC stuff and what the differences actually look like. There seems to be an assumption made that there's going to be business done behind closed doors. The public won't be able to either have comment on or be part of at any point and somehow that there's power being taken away from the people to help make decisions around economic, environmental. So I'd like to know, what is the, what is the difference between an Albion first entity's relationship to transparency and the work of the public?
And I guess I will answer Councilmember Waller's question as well, but I have talked to anybody that listens about the MATA model because I think it's a successful model. And I, there was definitely more of the previous council members I talked to and I know I talked to Mayor Dave about it, just with COVID, but I have not had the chance to talk with all of you as much about it.
And Richard MATA, I know I didn't want to share this topic with someone, but.
MATA is the Marshall Area Economic Development Alliance and it is a nonprofit entity that contracts through a service agreement. So it's very similar setup. Contracts with the Marshall DDA, contracts with the Marshall Global Finance Authority, which is not exactly the same as the EDC, but has similarities to Albion, EDC, and also with the city of Marshall providing economic development services, provide chamber services and provide tourism services. And so it does a lot of the same things. And part of what I wanted to say is our, our CEO, Jim Durian, was recently, actually it's six months ago, was hired and then, you know, in the last couple of weeks, he's been concerned with the social district in downtown Marshall, making sure that that's a vital support for the businesses downtown Marshall. And printer, we hired, we purchased route to a printer for that district. So that's a DDA function. He's worried about working on, so over the summer, tourism function, chamber function. He's also got work that I actually can't talk about in any detail, but it's basically site select your work, right? It's stuff where companies are coming in, they're looking at Marshall and they want information. So, so we've successfully combined together all those different pieces that Albion's looking at. It's done through a nonprofit and then back to what Councilmember Williamson asked. The difference with a nonprofit, and the attorney can back me up on this, is it's not a public body. And so it's not subject to FOIA, it's not subject to a community's act. And so those, those are both a concern and I hear what Councilmember Waller's saying, but for economic development purposes, it is vital, in my opinion, to be able to have that kind of a relationship so that you can actually have those discussions, have them in a situation where you can interact with a company that wants confidentiality. Now, now the EDC has been able to do that, but it's really been able to do that, might be because basically there's been an agreement among people and Albion to basically keep things under wraps, right? But it's, it's not official. If somebody wanted to come in, send a FOIA request and give me every communication you've had from site select here in the last five years and every piece of paper that you've turned over to them, the EDC would have to turn all of that over. It's subject to FOIA, it's a, it's a public body. So the difference is to me is what it's, it's you're creating to be able to make yourself more attractive to entities that want to locate into Albion. And they, they want confidentiality. They, they want to know that this is not going to be discussed about until they're ready to, to announce it publicly. And they frankly will go elsewhere and find communities that are able to keep things confidential if Albion's not able to keep it confidential. That's, that's really what it comes down to. And you know, there, and so we talked a lot, we didn't know that, we had two, two special meetings about this, I made a presentation about this a while ago. We talked about the, the public accountability. And so the accountability comes in my mind through the budgets because the money is coming from public entities. So it's coming from the city, it's coming from the EDC, it's coming from the DDA. And so those entities have, will have representation on board, they'll have their budgets will have to be approved. And essentially they've got to work in the harmonious way with those entities. And if they don't, essentially the city can shut it back down if they don't want to. And MATA, MATA is subject to that and it is an issue every, I should say it's an issue, it's a conversation every year with the city council and reports after meeting, city council, there is, there is a lot of back and forth. But when there is a project and the project is secret, it's just MATA. And that's the understanding. There's not outside, all the MATA members have signed confidentiality agreements, they'll sign non-disloyal agreements. They don't talk about what happened in those board meetings outside of the board meetings. And that's, in my opinion, how it's got to be done. Backbeat Unlimited, it's done exactly the same way. Jackson Economic Development, it's done the same way. Chelmsoo, it's done the same way. It was up at Bushing and First. This, this is not something that Marshall created. This is a pattern across the entire state. So that's, that's kind of my perspective on it. I'm glad they answered any questions.
Councilwoman Waller, I want to ask you a question. I don't, I don't really see that as a big problem as far as confidentiality or a person wants or a company wants to come here. And I'll use the example as a project tyger. It's project tyger, it's always been project tyger. We still don't know who the project tyger was. So I think Amy has done a really good job as when she was working with or trying to get people to come into here, even when she's working with people in that experience. So I don't see what that's a really big issue by what she's done thus far. I don't like the idea, and I'll be strong about that, of going to a nonprofit. Because there is a lot of things, just as you're saying, that won't be discussed and doesn't have, you know, that you won't even know. I think that's one of the problems with Albion. You can't compare Albion to Jackson, Backbeat or Marshall because we're different. Jackson, maybe Jackson's a little bit like us and maybe Backbeat, but Marshall's nothing like that. Doesn't look like us and it has to look like us. So I don't, I don't see that as, because here's, I don't think it's cool.
Councilwoman Lysit.
So my question is, at which point did the board, so which board voted yes and which board voted no? So DDA, I understand DDA voted yes. I'm moving forward with the conversation, right? Sorry. They voted yes to do it. But yes, you want to continue down this road. Chamber voted.
Yeah, yeah, we have the Greater Albion Chamber.
And so then it comes down to the EDC board that voted no. What were the overarching concerns in the EDC board about why they're supposed to go? That's why they're going on. And I know the mayor's on that board. I know Mr. Hardness is on that board. I guess what, what was the, what was the overarching factor to why they voted no?
Since I am representing the EDC, I'll work to address that. I'm sorry, sir, who are you again?
I'm Richard Linsley.
And Richard, your role is?
I'm the attorney and I draft the agreements.
On behalf of the group, you're the attorney attorney?
My client was Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce. Without my understanding, there was money put in by all the entities to basically score the set option.
Okay.
Each board agreed to contribute up to $2,000 for, for Richard to be legal counsel really and work to put together the service agreement. So the EDC, the DDA and the chamber all were going to put in.
And your experience with these types of boards or this type of transition, help me to that place?
So I was, I served as the chair and I'm currently with a general counsel for MATA and Marshall. I served as the chair for two years and I've been on that board since 2014, shortly after this set up. And so I have experience with that. Okay, I spoke with that.
Okay. And just for my sake, because I, maybe I don't get all the memos, but just, just.
I've not met you before, so very nice to meet you this way.
Very nice to meet you also, absolutely. So how were you selected? Who identified you as the voting guy to be selected as council?
I, I don't know. I was asked a year and a half ago, I'm a representative of the city council about this issue and I'm a parent of representation. And I think it was the previous council. I don't, I know it's this council. And they then had a discussion about it and they then went out to the other boards to review that. I was maintained by Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce as the judiciary for the group.
Okay. Okay. So, so your history has sort of started before this kind of surfaced as a group had a discussion.
Yeah.
Okay. So that kind of helps me frame to some degree, some of the efforts that have been done well before this has gotten to the different, the different groups, right? There was an effort to kind of get this going. We've, we've already said, we don't know exactly how this came about, right?
I gotta ask the representative of the city council. So there's, there was some discussion beforehand, we put that in the, I don't think there was.
Well, I'm really having a problem with the fact that, excuse me, shame, but I'm having a problem with you wanting to know who was the one that voted against this whole thing.
I don't know who. I don't know why it didn't, why, why didn't it have similar reasons?
No, that's not what you just did. That's not what you just did.
Who, which for? It is the for, but no. So why didn't it happen?
Okay. So, let me finish. But at the same time, a direct question was asked by my caller of where this came from. And I understand Mr. Lindsay may not remember, but I have a, I'm having a problem believing that nobody can remember how it started. Because I was on council. I know I didn't initiate it. I know Matt didn't initiate it. I know some of the other people didn't initiate it. So I'm having a problem with then we don't know how this started.
Yes, and I did, but I'm to answer that. I don't, I don't remember how it got started. I think variations of Albion first or a consolidation have been in discussion since I was interviewed for my position. I mean, that was part of the discussion the day I was interviewed. It's, it's a model that maybe we would want to go into at some time. There's been discussions, small discussions, mind you, not that really ever got legs, but that creating EDC into a separate model. but that creating EDC into a separate model, not a MAJA, but a VCU that does, a non-disclosure amendment, I'm sorry, that, that has those protections in place. We've never pursued that down that road. So there's probably been these discussions happening for a long time. This started somewhere, and I can't even remember that, I remember seeing an email that maybe, maybe came from the DDA that said, you know, we don't have staff, this is an option, what do we think? Eric, or Eric collapsed at the chamber, or however that happened, and I'm not privy to that. So I think just because of, of the circumstances and the different boards, it became, maybe we should look at it. And that's kind of how I remember it getting started.
And like, you know, for the experiment?
Yeah, I would add too, as part of Project Rising Tides, DDA received services to revise their master plan, not the right word, I forget what the?
Development plan.
Yeah, development, I think, too. And, and so as a part of that discussion and a part of that work, you know, of a staff member to be able to help move that plan forward and take action on the items that were identified that the DDA continues to be sort of a, that sort of a challenge for the DDA. So when the pandemic sort of rolled in, and the DDA, you know, everybody wants to continue to try to move things forward and not get stalled out. So I recall, after that plan was, was sort of finalized, that, that I had a conversation with Scott Evans and said, like, so like, what ideas do we have? Like, what's working with MAJA, or what's not working with MAJA? Do we need to have more of a conversation? Maybe this is the time now that the DDA's invested efforts and part of the Project Rising Tide funds went towards putting that plan together. Maybe it's, it's an opportunity for us to like, think about it and see. I think that there've been surface level conversations like Amy had said in the past, but maybe it was kind of really actually, really look at it. So I believe that, yeah, then that, whether Scott Evans is the chair of the DDA, asked whether we could have a conversation, have Richard share with, with the city council about what, what those were. That's sort of my recollection of maybe how we got to this, sort of the start of it.
And then?
I had a conversation with Mayor Dave before I was even on the EDC board. And I've been on the EDC board kind of unofficially for a while, for about a year and a half now. So I had a conversation with Mayor Dave before that, in the spring or fall before. And I got on like in December a year ago. Yeah. Before COVID, September the 19th. So about a year and a half. So they have gotten from the mayor, is what I'm thinking, because he was kind of picking my brain to see what I thought about it, as he was looking to nominate me to be on the EDC board.
And I, from my understanding, as I was coming on board, I knew or I was told that these type of discussions have been happening, but because of COVID, because entities were losing resources coming in, that now is the time to kind of, let's pull this together, let's see if we can make this work, technically. So I think that's why these discussions kind of came together from the different entities, like in November, December, to figure out, is this a viable option? And so, like you were saying, yeah, the DDA was in agreement, Chamber was in agreement, but then the EDC decided that wasn't a good fit for them. So this is kind of where we are, yeah.
Mayor College, I'm interrupting you. I think, I don't, I don't think that it was a question of good overall. I think it was more a question of the priorities set forward for the EDC would be compromised by a consolidation, okay? Understanding what our role has been as the EDC, mirroring it with other good clauses would mar the efforts of the EDC. And so Shane, I don't know if I answered your question, but let me try. I think it was a united vote on those, those board members' part, that for the reasons I just gave, the mayor, that this was not within our bandwidth for the goals that we have set forward, that have been set forward with, for us as I, we understand them, okay? There's a totally different skill set in consolidating a board. The expertise is different. There's, there's different kinds of goals that we have that need emphasis. And I think that the board has clearly set priorities, and we have to continue to work on setting those priorities, that will move this community forward, not as a one entity community. We are at a disadvantage in Albiens. So now I'm trying to mount like soapbox on behalf of the EDC, okay? We are one, a rough way of putting it, because we're a one horse town. We have a great Albiens college, which has done tons for this community, and I believe will do more. But this community, Sean, needs more than just Albiens college as an economic stimulus. We don't have that. From my perspective, and I don't know if I speak for the board, but I probably do from their vote count, we need to fortify, shore up, put immense emphasis on building this community as an economic town. This, we're a one horse show right now, right? This Albiens college, there's, there's a couple other businesses. We have to grow this community with other economic stimulus, and we need to be a?
I'm sorry, I just let the mayor know I'm listening.
And I think the board is united in understanding that we need to be specifically about the business of doing that.
No, thank you. I'm, so, so just to kind of like summarize, from the EDC board perspective, taking on this idea of merging entities under one, not merging as things are word, but contracting of the new entity to expand the work of the EDC would really mire it down. And so, you know, instead of miring down the good work of the EDC, you just aren't going to do it at all. So, great, that's good to understand. I think, what I think is a little upsetting to me, being a small business owner myself, is to think that Albiens is a one horse town. I think that that's a bit offensive to many folks in town who run small businesses or who are working on the redevelopment of our community in so many different areas. So I just, I want, I hope that, I hope that you'll back up a little bit on that. Albiens college might be the largest entity and they need them to succeed, and they are a wonderful partner for so many things in Albiens. I would, I would hate to say that they're the only thing in Albiens that can help it forward, so just, I just want to say that out loud. Thank you for sharing that. I guess my, one response to this, my question might really remain solution focused. So, that's just a bit about the EDC. What can be done? What can these entities do together? I mean, this, this conversation's been happening for a long time, admittedly for several years in several different ways. What is it that can be done? Is there a way to phase up? Can the DDA and the Chamber team up? Can there be a pathway to creating the economic juggernaut that we want in the community? VCU, MAJA, the PAH, we think has one. This is the trend where we're merging resources and attacking bigger employment opportunities for our communities. I would hate for us to miss out on that by not, by ignoring the trend in economic development. So what can be done? What are some things these boards or this work group think can be done to make things better economically?
Absolutely. Council member while I'm here, Albiens, I would say council member while there.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I, I'm just gonna be clear. I, I, I know this conversation has been going on for a long time, but people do need to do some research. So I want to first thank Mr. Lindsay for breaking it all down the way he did. But he, no, I would never hurt his feelings, but I did not hear that in the D, in the DDA meeting. What I heard in the DDA meeting is that this particular entity did not have to just, they did not have to be transparent. That's, that's what I heard, that's why I had the problem. So, like I say, you know, I never hurt your feelings or anything like that, but I'm just trying to put out there, you know, something that's, that's just gonna help me make a, a better decision as far as for today. When the discussion was happening in the DDA board meeting, after it was over, I called Scott Evans, and I, I just expressed my concern. I was like, Scott, I really don't, you know, like the idea of the people not, you know, having the transparency that they, they may want or that they may inquire. So that's why I just want to explain to everybody why I'm stuck on the transparency deal. So I yield.
That's a very good, I know you've been getting up a while, but?
Yeah, maybe this question is to Richard. So under state law, economic development authorities require to have, to have confidentiality. And a lot of economic development authorities, a lot of economic development authorities have a closed process, meaning they've got the process through early negotiation where the NDAs require for the DDA. And then when they get it closed, they're maybe supplying for those non-disclosure, even what happened to the non-disclosure, to the business end. So is any of that talked about in any of those models?
The problem in Michigan is not any provision that I'm aware of, and I'm sort of city attorney as well, as far as they are public entities. So a public entity is defined as basically a subunit of a, of a state government, which the EDC would be and which the DDA would be as well. Chamber is not, Chamber is a non-profit organization. It, it's all subject to FOIA, it's all subject to the exact. So what has happened over time is they have migrated into, and I guess you have some experience in talking to you, these types of, of efforts to be able to have that non-disclosure of those pieces, that's just something that a government really has a struggle with. And you can sort of have a handshake agreement among the members that they will not talk about. But I would not, in many ways, say Amy's done a fantastic job with the work that she's done, she's done a very good job. It's, it's the next thing that's going to come up and it's the, it's the most important concerns are about. So, so that, that's been the contractual with third party. And back to the mayor, I mean, I think the EDC could contract with the DDA services. And part of this is revenue, there's a piece of revenue that the Chamber has from memberships and from the, the VAT tax. And so, you know, that, that piece could come in and they could do chamber services and do DDA services, because you're not ever going to have that confidentiality piece, which then translates exactly into council, council members, lawyers, followers, concerned about transparency. I mean, that's, that's the DDA.
So, so early on in that process, before it was to close, a lot of states have that, where you can close and have that privacy, have that, that quiet phase, and you're in a department phase, under Michigan, it's sort of a, no, no portability in terms of that, to even under a face of negotiations.
No, I mean, there's some things that are in negotiations about property, there's some very little that you can do that are not just a law.
Well, property is, property is definitely is, so you can do around property.
So, so the attorney will refresh my, my reflection, I think when the public entity is purchasing property?
It's solely private property, right? And it's really a negotiation, so?
There is an exception.
It's solely limited to purchase the property, not, or sell. So? Right. And that's the cause I'm shooting for here, because that's usually the umbrella that most EDAs, sort of, come up with, is the property, property negotiation process that allows for non-disclosure early in those processes, that then keeps things under wraps when negotiations are happening, may or may not be tied into the DDA. And then as you move through, and you move to close, the closing of things, then you have to release, it's part of, boy, you're right, part of the process of a public entity. I, I think that's, I just, I'm trying to think about some optionality in terms of that process, to sort of at least address that issue, because it's a legitimate issue. But I, I'm not 100% convinced that in terms of the spirit of a not, of, of an entity like the DDA, it can't, can't be accounted for in this world of cases. So I, I think that's something we need to explore. Now, that may not get to some of the other issues, the motivations around bias, merger report, but at least in there, it's worth an additional homework. So that area, that issue. That in itself has to be a concern to the school. Yeah, right. That in itself has to be a great concern to the school, based off what I've seen structured, right? Back from, yeah. So, so I, I do think it's worthy of that. I might just kind of go back to Sean, if you're allowed.
Shane.
Shane, no?
Yeah.
Shane? The words I use are for the benefit of the community. Revenue wise, Albiens college is about the biggest thing you have today. Their revenue is in excess of 40, 50 million dollars annually. There's not many other businesses in Albiens that do that, right? We lost Kay Valgen in 2001. His highest revenue year was 91 million dollars. On average, it gets 75 million dollars yearly for a number of years. And I think, folklore has it, that that was a big stimulus in this community. So when I say what I said, that's what I mean by it. I have no qualms about your business or my business, but we need to generate greater revenues in this community to stimulate the community itself, for people to move into town, to want to move into town, for downtown to be stimulated, for communities to be stimulated. We need five, seven small companies with 50 or 100 people, generating 30 million dollars a year, and do a miracle for this community. So that's a big job task, right? And that's, that's what I mean. So I hope to bring some clarity for you.
Okay. And then Natalie, I know you've been ahead of the curve, but I would like to list people that you want to add?
Yeah, so I wanted to specifically touch on the, the transparency issue, all the way back into very beginning, some of the notes and questions and concerns that were placed or sort of given, I think, to the work group from after the presentation by Mr. Lindsay. One of those was transparency. And so that was a piece of conversation all along the way during the work group meetings. We struggled to get to a place where we could craft, say, bylaws that would articulate and clearly document how we would proceed with sharing information at what points and whatnot. So we couldn't get to the point of really addressing the transparency concern. That's not to say that we were ignoring it, or that it was, that we were just going to bypass it and, and move on. We couldn't even start to have the conversation about what projects, what kind of work the new entity might do getting off the ground. We even talked about the possibility that some of the, the, the sort of, the early on work in working with businesses that would continue to stay with the EDC. That was one of the possibilities discussed, so that it continued. And it could have continued in perpetuity to be a place that was under the EDCs and the, and the work of the EDC. Each order, during the work group, we talked about that we would, each board would sort of set from their goals, what Mr., wrong, Mr., I'm sorry. Those goals that each board has that wants to work toward, how we would sort of task the new entity and hold the new entity accountable for results, for the, the money and the, the funding that would be provided. It was gonna, they were gonna have to show results for the projects that, that, and so we talked about whether early on, they would report back to each board quarterly, more often, every six months, once a year. We had some of these discussions about how to make sure that, that the entity was really staying on track, because I think in the larger spirit, one, the overhead and cost associated with each entity separately are significant. associated with each entity separately are significant. And yes, Alvin is is special and unique, but when it comes to pay and benefits and the cost of paper for copies and coffee machines, and that is not necessarily different across the board. So when every entity has to um uh contract and get legal services or or work on a new project or or anything like that, there's a there's already a like a baseline cost that's just gonna come with that. And we really felt like, why not spread some of those costs across a bigger amount of groups to disperse it and then free up more funds to actually be able to be doing really significant work within the community? That that was when when I was thinking about the the plans that the BDA had put together. You know, the BDA is in a weird spot right now. It's not gonna have revenue, it's a negative revenue for several years to come. So we're just supposed to, you know, wait and hope that like the downtown is gonna become better and that more students are gonna wanna be here and be downtown and have a vibrant community? I don't, I don't wanna wait. I don't wanna wait. I wanna figure out how to reduce some of those costs, because I think some of the work um when it comes to economic development and and downtown development and tourism, that they have common features in that a a a service agreement that a group or individual or a director, working and saying, working on this project is scratches the itch in the niche um and goals for the DDA, the EDC, and the Chamber all simultaneously, rather than the DDA trying to do a little bit, a little project, Chamber doing a little project, the EDC doing much bigger projects than all of us all together. We're just the little itty bitty, you know, minions or the the little ants that just sort of like pick up some of the bread from um that the 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 EDC sort of drops around. But I just really think that there are costs that can be saved significantly by by these, this service agreement being very thoughtful in a ramp up of it over several years. I'm thinking long term, um and and so that's the the big thing that I think. There are certainly concerns, and I just wanna make sure that it's on the record here in front of everybody, that transparency was discussed at almost every meeting. It was something that we all continued to think about and worked out. We couldn't get to where we were, we could definitively answer questions about how do we provide transparency? We just couldn't get there. We couldn't get there yet. And so as we each were trying to put together the service agreement and go back to each of the boards and say, are we in agreement in continuing further? The DDA board said, yes, we wanna continue this conversation, please continue the work. Chamber did as well, and the EDC said, no, please stop, stop with this work. That's my understanding. But I just don't want it to be that like transparency and some of the concerns that were brought up by council after uh Richard's first uh presentation, that those were disregarded whatsoever.
And and then if you have comment?
May I ask just a clarification question? Um the boards of the three individual organizations would be dismantled or would they continue to stand? And in addition, we would have a new board for Alvin purposes?
So as as in the, I guess, the discussions we had, it would be that the Chamber of Commerce would eventually resolve through this process. Um so it's probably be absorbed by the new entity. The EDC and the DDA, especially if it exists, so they collect taxes and then they transmit taxes through administrative process. Um it's, they're, so they're collecting taxes. If they don't exist, then they can't, they can't take this, this resource anymore. So those entities, those two entities would still remain. They would still be on whatever schedule, the budget required, that's what's happening in Marshall. Um but they don't have any staff, they don't do any, any other preservation of the budget and then do to act as the review. Um you know, they would be the, basically oversight, public oversight of this, of this, of this process. And we didn't really get into that discussion very much, because we didn't, didn't, part of, and and part of the fundamental issue was, again, what that Berkeley is saying, a public entity is always subject to these, always subject to, a nonprofit, non-public who chooses one and somebody to, well, I shouldn't say somebody, but it can have a transparent process, but it can also say, in this situation up to this point, NDAs, when I can talk about this, is concluded by, which, which Amy is very quickly done, but by Senator Foye, she had to give me all the information about it. It's not, it's it's not supportable, not official channel.
And another question, we gave right into that. So if they each have their own boards, why can't that, say, EDC not continue to receive a lawyer request or have an open meeting?
They can still have a lawyer request for what the EDC does, what the EDC has, is a management agreement, a service agreement with a certain entity, so it doesn't go over to them.
So the, so they can still get lawyer requests and they can still have open meetings as an EDC board?
Correct.
Correct. So they doesn't just vanish because we're working with Alvin first?
No.
Thank you.
The the difference would be, so the EDC has an agreement that's gonna make up the numbers. So I don't pay a basis to pay a hundred thousand dollars to Alvin first to do these things, so that when the state selector comes in and says, we want to look at Alvin, if we want you to put all this stuff together, we want you to be with this, we want you to work, all that stuff is done by Alvin first. So the question that comes to the EDC is, we pay a hundred thousand dollars a year to Alvin first, that's the answer, and maybe their business. Lawyer request to to Alvin first is, we're not holding.
So they are happy with the lawyer.
We're gonna, we're gonna release things on our schedule when we should release those. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Emily, you have comment?
Yeah, um I just wanna make it clear that, in my impression, and I got some in court here that can, that can tell me I'm wrong, but the EDC did not say, Alvin first can't move forward. The EDC said, EDC's not interested in 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 continuing to put the resources and the energies behind trying to figure out what those services are, because we're effectively running and and happy with that. And that it didn't necessarily, and I remember her saying this specifically, it didn't take it off the table for good. It was, we, you know, maybe the future. Um so I think it was the understanding of the EDC board that perhaps the Chamber, the DDA would continue on through uh through this work.
Perfect. And I wanna, I'm gonna, first of all, I'm gonna say when we um all voted to table that, that's the discussion that we wanted to hear right there. It wasn't necessarily that we were trying to uh point a finger, or I'll say, I was not trying to point a finger when I voted that way. Um I just wanted to get more dialogue with such as what we're having today, and um so I could better understand what this was and and what you were presenting. The other thing I wanted to say, Amy, in your history, have you ever had a problem with people, you know, going that, going forward, if you were doing business, people asking for that information?
Was that true to me?
Yes.
Um I have, I have received FOIAs, uh but in the four and a years that I've been here in Alvin, I have never received a FOIA that put a project at risk. We do a really good job of of calling things by project name. Even my board doesn't know the name unless we enter into a confidential agreement, and I need them in that. One of the things that Mr. Harvey shared early on that is critical is the EDC board is made is made up of experts in things that I can tap into. So as a small, uh, small staffed uh organization, you know, if I if I need to tap into somebody that might know how a relationship with a a manufacturer, Mr. Harvey or Mr. Hoss might be able to help me out with that, that that key part is very, very important to this. And as I understand from looking at the service agreement, the makeup of that board, yes, you would still have the EDC board, but it's gonna be a dormant board for for, you know, all intents purposes. So I'm not gonna have the ability to reach out to Mr. Harvey or someone else and and have that relationship. So it, that's something that that is concerning with the the new makeup. It's it's made up to represent all the entities coming in in the city, but not necessarily give give the backbone that's needed to help with with recruitment of projects and recruitment of businesses.
Thank you, ma'am. I just have a question on that. If I'm understanding this, wouldn't though the director that was hired to oversee Alvin first, they would still be responsible to report back to the DDA board and the EDC board to provide them updates with um projects or tasks that they have been assigned by these boards? Is that correct?
That's the way it works for the EDA.
So you still would be able to turn to that level of expertise uh with that of those boards?
It it really becomes about choosing when you're subject to FOIA, when you're not, and and be able to say that we're not as a private entity. Um in Marshall, you can set what Harvey wants to, there, I should say, the variation, but in Marshall, the local finance authority and the national authority both still exist, still being on a monthly basis. Um I'm a sort of representative by the DDA and LFA, and there are, I think, four members of those entities that serve on MADE as well, because you get a KCC representative, right? And and so Matt Davis is both the KCC representative, he's on the MADE board, and it's a small business center. So you get a lot of people that cross over. And I think essentially you're gonna, it it depends on how how it's set up in Alvin, but you're gonna get a lot of the same people, and you're gonna have the DDA, um and I think the EDC board will still be there as a source of expertise would be my, my thought. But of course, depending, who gets the point? I guess one of the things that we talked about at length also with the idea of of transparency is to make sure, or as as proposed, will be that obviously manager, will be a permanent member, president of the college, or his destiny would be a permanent member in Alvin, with all of Alvin College and Alvin. And then also the the county administrator, or designated, is destined to be a uh permanent member as well. And working with the county, and it's actually a county when the transfer, the government was transferred from the Chamber to to MADE, the county administrator was very specific about tourism money has to be used for tourism, it can be diverted into something else. And so part of why the way MADE's solved that, just put her on the board, made her trigger. So I guess, so it's not an issue, and and I think that model works well. And again, that's that's a transparency issue from the from the county board as well, because of public financials.
Council member?
So I wanna add to what council member Clark actually said earlier. This is the exact, I mean, what we were getting at is why, why it wasn't this happening right now? What was the holdup? What can we do? That was the conversation that I wanted to have with many of the other council members about, what can we do? I don't believe for a second that EDC voted um voted down moving forward with Alvin first because they didn't wanna do what's good for Alvin anonymously. I think that there might be a situation where there could be a way for you both to work together differently. Um so I'd like to hear, so now that each organization has spent money on this process, they've spent a lot of time on this process, what's the commitment from each organization moving forward? Is there, is there um a rope that's been decided for the Chamber and the DDA to work together? Is the EDC gonna be supportive of that? Uh is there a new conversation coming forward? Are there new board members at EDC? Do you wanna reconsider um going back from this opportunity to continuing down the conversation? What next steps are gonna be happening with each organization? Um it would seem kind of counterintuitive, spend all the money, time, and resources and not figure out what could we learn from it, what can we take from it to do better? Um if not, make Alvin first's energy happen, what's gonna happen next?
And then, what would be the monetary commitment from each organization to move forward? Is that money initial, that initial money, is that gone? Is there, what's the monetary if if, say, the EDC board, and I don't speak for the entire board, um I speak for me, I have other questions. Um the monetary commitment, if we say, okay, let's move forward, let's get a bit, little bit further down the the railroad tracks here and see what this looks like? What's, is there more monetary commitment being needed? Or?
The Chamber would, the Chamber would know, because they're the, they're the ones who had the money, and I think you did, but.
We did, so.
I agree.
It's incredibly generous, and we have not gone through the initial money that we collected for, we spent minimal, wow, that was good. Yeah.
How how much was that? What was that? How was that allocated between the three, three groups?
Two thousand each. Two thousand dollars each, so six thousand dollars total.
And was that, was that the original request?
Yes.
I think initially, I can't remember who voted to offer the two thousand, and then I think the DDA, okay, we'll match that, and then, I don't remember the exact secret that the staple was like, Tony, that we'll throw in this amount, and then other entities will match that amount.
I think Richard gave an estimate on to to work with the work group, develop a service agreement, and then move to the steps of um filing articles of organization at state level, and then filing, final one two three for the new entity um that he estimated it would likely not exceed six thousand dollars. And then each, I think each directors, and then we'll go back to our boards and see if we can approve a contribution, equal contribution uh towards that, is I think, for the reason I get.
So so it's not really a, it's not really a resource, it's a time commitment at this point, because there's already been resources set aside, it's, do people wanna spend more time talking and in in figuring out, are there other options? Because I I actually like really appreciate the EDC, uh Mr. Harvey, explaining exactly why the board did what they did and how and how, and one of the main factors. Um but moving forward, how can you maybe work together more uh and be more uniform in our, in our pursuits, which are not totally different from each other? So I'm just wondering if there, the possibility of a conversation can be continued?
Shane, uh I've I've learned at my old age now, never say never. But I will tell you that the straw pole that I have gotten is the EDC remains in the same place. For the other two groups and organizations to work together, I think that's great, okay? So just as a side comment, what what I'm hearing, and certainly I'm not an attorney, is me figuring out how not to share with the public what we're doing. If I'm an outsider, that's what I get from this. Now, maybe I'm wrong, because you said that, you know, you're working or you're going to work on how to be transparent, right? Under the assumption that we got leaky votes in terms of potential projects, okay? I don't buy that for a minute, or just to be frank with you. We need to be more committed to transparency. Setting up a system today and then working on how to be transparent doesn't cut it. You've already set, you're already setting a system that says you don't have to be transparent. Think of the public, just think of our citizens, that they need to have access to the the things that are going on. And what what it sounds like to me, maybe I'm wrong, I'm not the smartest cookie in the drawer, that we're setting a system that says you don't need, you don't have to be transparent. That's, that's not good. That's not our mission as public service, I don't think.
I'm not getting that message, but I'll let.
I'm sorry?
I'm not getting, I'm personally not getting that message that we're trying to not be transparent. I think that's why you were saying that, you know, that EDC can still be FOIA, the DDA can still be FOIA, Chamber's different, because Chamber, not.
Yes, ma'am, I don't mean to cut you off, but with the attorney, if I understood, just explain, under the system you're setting up, you don't have to, you don't have to be transparent. Is that what I understood, uh, sir?
So so there are circumstances when you are working with the traction of the businesses that you don't wanna have, be public access to everything that you do. It's not just, it's not just Alvin, it's across the state, it's, I mean, maybe, was that correct? So maybe it's something that ought to be approached with the state legislators to be changed, but I mean, if you look at the history of Michigan's success with water and health and projects, um Michigan has had some trouble with some of these things. And I I've not done a study, and so I can't say numbers to you, but it creates problems to have these, have these issues. Now, Amy's done a very good job, I don't surprise you, she's not had any problems. It's not an issue until it's an issue. And if it is an issue, where the company is gonna come in. I've sat with the site selectors, I've sat with people that are visiting, and I've signed non-disclosure agreements as as a member of MADE. They're serious about it, they're a hundred percent serious about it. And if it's out, you're not gonna hear from them. And the site selectors, there are site selectors that talk to each. And the site selectors, there are site selectors that talk to each other. And so one site selector talks to this site selector and said, I don't know, we went to Alvin, and they weren't able to keep the same address, and so we're able to also. I mean, we are applying for these projects. They have, any of these projects, they have multiple, multiple sites. They are looking for reasons to cross us off and move on to someplace else. This is their reason to do that.
We haven't had that problem today, is that right?
Well, you plan today for the issue you're gonna have tomorrow, that's my doubt, as an attorney.
But we haven't had that problem yet.
You don't have the problem until you have the problem.
So the answer is no, we haven't had a problem.
It's not anything.
The answer suggested no answers then.
But.
Isn't yes or no?
It is nothing you've had a problem with at this point. It is a problem when it's a problem. I don't have a particular point in this, in this fight. I'm, I'm, I was asked to give information, if I'm driving information.
I understand, but you've done the turn to me.
Well.
From this point, those two people has really been talking to me and Shane. I like, you know, how the other council members feel about this kind of.
My councilman, please, and another person.
So just a question, Mr. Harvey, you said it was a straw hole on your board to figure out whether to support a continuous conversation. I'm wondering, Mr. Snyder, can you speak to that straw hole where you asked?
No, I'm sorry.
And that's where you asked? Where you asked whether you want to continue the conversation at Alvin First or not?
No, I was not, I'm unable to attend that meeting when they voted, so no.
Or did you recall, or, okay, Mr. Harvey?
No, I placed a vote, but not a vote.
So I think there's, I think there's maybe some misrepresentation of what's been done before this meeting tonight. You could clearly, there wasn't a straw hole of the entire board about whether to support. Maybe, maybe I can ask you, Mr. Snyder.
As I said right here, you can ask me directly.
Well, I'm actually, I'm, excuse me, sir.
I'm sorry.
I have a floor.
The straw hole means.
Excuse me, sir, I have a floor, I have a floor.
We can conduct the.
So maybe I was gonna ask you, Mr. Snyder, since you're a member of the EDC as part of council, maybe you can commit to taking this back to the EDC board for discussion at their next meeting? To maybe get an official conversation going about whether we want to continue this conversation, whether we want to just hang it up now and not before? Because that is an option, right? The option is we could say, nope, we're not gonna do this anymore. And that would be an okay solution. But I really think that the boards should have the opportunity to have that discussion in the end about what it is they would like to do or not. So that's, that's kind of what I was getting at, so thank you.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Any of this question is for you. You mentioned Battle Creek Unlimited has protections in place. Do you see more tools that at all?
The protection is in place for the public again? No, 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 I didn't, I'm sorry, if I said that, I didn't mean to say that. A Battle Creek Unlimited is different than MADEA in that it is strictly, I mean, the form of it is similar, but it's strictly economic development. It doesn't have the DDA's, I remember, I did a nine-month sit there, so. But it, it was not legal. I mean, we didn't, we didn't, we were not allowed to. Although, I'll change that answer because they also have a tip of board that's separate than their VCU board, and that tip of board was legal because there's yet too much of it.
Thank you. Just with regard to where I said, I wholeheartedly believe that we need what Mr. Harvey has described in terms of more employment. However, I am concerned about where people will live and about who they will be hiring, considering what I understand about the current need in our community. So when I think about what needs to be happening as we move forward, I'm very encouraged by what I see happening with the EDC and more the first targeted task force and the concern about childcare and the other things that need to be in place. But I'm not really hearing that out of these discussions. And I want to hear more about the current quality of life for our residents when we're looking to attract employers, where people live, and what our resident type has to do.
Yes.
So, Jackson.
Yes, I'm hearing many different themes, and also from you saying this as well. But I guess I'm gonna ask a question first. So we said that when we made that decision with her, we didn't need that person of who wanted to know our information. So what I want to know, isn't this what this information is, and why you guys are here? Because of the decisions you made in the past, correct? Not what we're trying to get you to do like ASAP right here today. I just didn't understand that. So, yeah, I mean, any of you can answer it. Because I don't want anybody to be like put up on like a little jury tonight. We just, I just want to hear what you have said because if I take it back to November, when we actually was sitting and listening to this conversation, I asked when we got on the board to have all your information brought to us, and that never was, so that we can be where you're at right now today, knowing why you wanted it to be combined in the first place. Because that was one of my problems, I was like, what's going on? Why are we trying to combine all these entities, okay? So I'm not here to, you know, all that, that's just not me. I wanted to know some of what you talked about for the foyer. Also, if we'll be transparent, okay? Yes, I do want to know how we can go forward. But to just continue to go back and forth, to slam one another, I'm just not here for that, okay? I want to know exactly, does it make sense to go forward as just being the EDC? And I heard the other thing of maybe combining the Chamber and the DDA board for right now, and then continue to look into this agreement that you have? Does that make sense to go forward? Is that how you guys are talking? Not about what you, how you talk before you did, how you talk before you came here? But what makes sense to go forward from this step? If you understand what I'm saying? Not to put this, the hiring in a special place, not to put Amy in a, not to put Emily in, but what makes sense to go forward? Because you've given us basically the information we need, okay, to make a decision, unless you come up with some more, and that would be through the lawyer. The three lawyers, basically. I don't quit this, we have one here. And I haven't heard much from you either. I'm, I'm one of the things that they're saying. Are you agreeing with what they're talking about as far as these entities come together? Because my thing is, what trend, which I hear from you, are we trying to follow? Does it make sense for Alvin? That's why we do, and that is why they chose. What makes sense for Alvin?
Amy, if you want to make a comment? I have a question with like a few minutes of the floor's time. Just as the president of the Greater Alvin Chamber of Commerce. We have a very limited budget. We have currently not a full-time executive director. We are moving out of our downtown office that we do not currently pay rent on so that that person who owns that building can offer that space to someone who will pay rent. So we will be officeless June 1st. I wonder everybody should remember that. We have a very limited amount of income, and we do not currently have enough income to offer a full-time director a full-time salary that would be decent and a wage that would be competent to compensate someone at the level that we need in this town. So the Greater Alvin Chamber has been looking for a way to combine with some other entities in town and actually become a viable organization moving forward. We do have accommodation tax, but that is also limited. And while it is coming at a much higher level than we anticipated when we shut down this town for COVID, we anticipated that that accommodation tax would bottom out, and that we would have virtually no income. So remembering that we are lucky that our, this hotel in this town has been pretty full, and it will be full for the foreseeable future due to other economic forces in the area. We are a little bit rudderless with not having an executive director and not feeling that we have enough income to be able to do that. And we have been searching for another model to be a better workable solution to continue to have a Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau in this town. Does that answer a lot of questions for people? Because that's the truth.
And just to add on that, so the, so the DDA is a tax capture authority. The problem with the DDA in a downtown that is a developed downtown isn't going to see any fantastic new development the way an industrial park would. The tax capture is going to be minimal. So it's the difference between existing taxes and what you pay when it's filled out. So if you have a industrial park that is worth $3,000 per acre, and you then put a multimillion-dollar manufacturing facility in there, you're gonna capture a lot of tax. And so that is what the EDC is doing, and that's what the LDFA is doing in Marshall, and that is what the tip authority and Valverde is doing. So those are all entities that are, that are gathering those dollars. The DDA in Alvin, who I don't know if that's what you want, doesn't have a lot of money to work with. The DDA in Marshall is, has, there hasn't funded like $7,000 a year, so it has no funds. The DDA in Battle Creek, my understanding is, is in very poor shape as well, doesn't have any staff. And so what, and I need to make sure, I was checking on Battle Creek Unlimited. Battle Creek Unlimited is a property corporation that has agreements with the tip authority. The tip authority captures tax from the industrial park and follows it in the Battle Creek Authority. They're in Battle Creek Unlimited. So at any given time, I can't say what they have as a fund balance right now, but they have 60, 70, 80 million dollars of fund balance because they're capturing a whole bunch of taxes from the industrial park. And so what you've seen in the last six months is who purchased the hotel in downtown Battle Creek? It wasn't the, it wasn't the DDA, it was VCU. Who toward that one purchased, toward that one, the marker in downtown Battle Creek? It was VCU. And so what it becomes is a way that they're using, this is something that MADEA is doing as well. You've got to use, attorney, attorney will make sure to do this correctly. It's that third of the DDA or the LDFA, EDC have to use the money for certain things. But through a service agreement, you can allow that to be spread a little more generally through the community. And so in Marshall, and again, we lost two our employers, State Farm and Eaton, about the same size as the Alvin close here. And what, what we see in Marshall is we've been able to take those resources from the industrial park and focus them into other communities, in downtown. And the things that the DDA could not do, that didn't have resources to do it, go into that area to be able to acknowledge that you come to Alvin because of the entire community. You don't come here because of just the industrial park or just the housing. Which is stated, all these things all work together as far as the attraction. And this is a way for this, doing agreement, like this still allows it to happen. I mean, functionally, the DDA and the Chamber are joining together, and they would have just not much together. I mean, they're, you've got to have the EDC as part of that, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mayor. That's, I was wanting to make that statement. Just as Amy mentioned on the Chamber, the DDA, we have their little reverence. Yes, we have the development happening in our downtown, but a lot of those development projects have round, the agreements tied to them. With that, they are increasing the tax value, but however, our DDA will not receive that increased tax capture for a while because with these agreements, that tax capture is then passed through, through the developer. So it will be a good 10-plus years depending on how long goes the terms are within those agreements, where our DDA will see a good level of capture this year. I know at our most exciting session where we set the goals, I know council, you got, you all made it pretty clear that you would love to see more economic development in all four doors of our community. With that, Chamber, we don't, Chamber does not have resources, DDA does not have resources. The EDC has the bulk of the resources available here in our community. So what, what can we do to figure out how are we going to bring more economic development to our, to our community? I think we can see more development here. It's just remember, okay, what does this be modeled, or what does this process look like? Because right now, it's not working for us. And I think we can do, do something differently, more better. I'm replying. Cool.
I'm just gonna mention, I think some of the things that are visible activities or work that's happening in, that I can speak to in the downtown, are happening by volunteers and by donations, by small businesses that are committed to making sure that for commencement, that the streets are clean, that the trees are trimmed, that there's new bark in those areas. There's only so long that so many people can continue to volunteer and do that. I think there will be a commitment to that because the college has communicated for several years prior to the current president that a big challenge that they have with. Is that parents and students go and look at other smaller arts colleges like Hope and look at the downtown and go, that's amazing. And that's a big challenge to Alvin's recruitment. And so that is a huge piece of, I think, yes, there is a lot of small businesses, and currently the Chamber really struggles to support and provide resources to their members or not, not members because of their current staffing levels. And, and that has changed over the pandemic. So again, the conversation came about because there might be an opportunity to do something a little bit different and provide better services to current businesses, to downtown, which would then spread across the community. And as a part of working together on economic development, supporting current businesses, that I think a big piece of economic development is also supporting the businesses that you currently have in your community and not just forsaking them and focusing on what new businesses can come in. And I've spoken multiple times about that, and I will say, you know, that the EDC provided some pandemic relief grants to local businesses, which were very valuable and supportive. And we just need to do more of that and continue to turn our focus to how do we grow our way out of this pandemic and the economic impacts that has been on it? And even issues that were a part of Alvin prior to the pandemic, like councilmember Lenny was mentioning about childcare and housing and all of those pieces. So that's, I think, a piece to understand of why it came across and why it sort of started the conversation. Amy?
I just want to say, you know, at one point, somebody, I think it was Shane, said that, you know, we want to figure out how we can all work together. Yes, there isn't a lot of staff right now in the Chamber, there's none in the DDA. But I think we do do a really good job of working together. And the funds that come from the tip up that drive economic development, economic development is a really broad statement. And that's one of the concerns that the EDC board has had in the service agreement. It says economic development. Well, you've got to get down to the nuts and bolts of that to find out what that is. Because, Mayor, you're on that board, and I've got several in here. We, we're talking in here about, you know, secret projects that come in, but we're not talking about retention efforts, the workforce efforts, the housing projects that we're on, the three companies that I worked with to find a downtown location today. You know, those are not necessarily EDC services, but the EDC has taken that on because we are a small community, we are, we do have that tax base. But if we all want to, you know, speak the truth, I went from five employees down to two, Christine and myself are all that's left, and we're still trying to expand services. When we look to take on two more entities, and whether it's a merger or not, it is taken and on. You know, somebody's got to be responsible for everything that's already being done. And what, what can we, what cost do we give? What do we say entrepreneurship doesn't count, for other way? You know, something's gonna have to give because right now, the EDC budget, as it is, covers everything that we're doing. There's nothing left over.
I'm just going to wrap up my comments by saying that I think I've lived in Alvin for 34 of my 34 years. And it has been, it feels like this cyclical thing that happens about every 10 years, where we have a conversation, we spend some money, we make an effort, and then we quit. And then we do it again. And we've seen it happen over and over again with all sorts of different things. Or we get so much behind something, and then everyone drops the ball because of either some influence or someone doesn't want to do something. It's usually personality or undue influence on our profits in Alvin that completely collapses. We are too small and continue to be too small of a community to have a million and one boards, a million and one administrators. It's similar, you know, Battle Creek is having the same conversation about their school district. They are too small of a city to have four separate school districts. It doesn't make any sense. But the reason we have those school districts and the reason those boards are set up where they are, there's some historical nature to that, and I think that kind of translates a little.
Order, are we talking about the school, or are we talking about Alvin first?
I, I, I am talking about, I'm making, I'm making an analogy to other entities that struggle with the same, with the same issue. Too many boards. And the desire for someone not to speak is not an appropriate reason to say call to order. Call, call someone out of order. It is actually if someone is out of order. So I just, point of information, that is promised procedure.
Well, I did apologize, I really did, because I was unaware you was talking about the school, and I thought we was talking about discussing the Alvin first. So I did apologize, thank you.
Thank you. So anyway, there are too many boards, there are too many silos in this very small community to continue to operate efficiently. We have three different entities working on some path to economic development. It doesn't make sense that we continue to be in silos. And while I, like, I'm one of the eight representatives of the. And while I, like, like, I'm one of the easier present day fans, like, I've been seeing the economic activity of East Alvin for a long time. So I'm just going to speak to, yes, you're absolutely right, you're doing this economic development, but what could we be doing more? Can we be doing more? The Chamber isn't dead, the DDA is not dead, the DDA has a future in tax capture. The Chamber is going to see elevated heads on that money for tourism in this community. Um, these foreign additions are by no means, um, life support. Um, I'm happy to hear from multiple people in the room that they're at least interested in having a discussion about how we can work together, uh, more effectively. Because working separately and apart is not going to work, we're just going to continue to duplicate and, you know, re-spend dollars every couple of years just to get the same information to find out that we should have been working together a long time ago. Um, and too many in this community, that is frustrating. It has become a common occurrence to be F nailable or F catch related and talk to people and say, well, that's just Alvin. That's how we think. That's just the way it's always been, you know, we just shoot ourselves in the foot every time. And we're not even going to decide collectively as a community that I'm tired of, well, that's just the way Alvin does things. We can't have nice things in Alvin, but we can't cross, you know, fences and talk to our neighbors and have a verbal conversation and open up in transparency. This, this, this use of the word transparency for the last five years in Alvin has been used to drive division amongst neighbors and residents of the community. Just because you're not at a particular table doesn't mean you've been excluded. You are, as a citizen, as a council member, as a leader, for example, we're asking for your seat just as well as I'm a council, making sure I roll the seat over so you can be there too. So transparency is not a matter of someone is trying to hide something. Just because you didn't see it on the first email or you didn't get the first phone call, doesn't mean that people are not being transparent or that's not going to be shared with you. So I just, I hope that we can collectively, this process is making it very apparent that we are still struggling with those issues. And until we can work together and recognize that and try to get through that together, we're not going to make any more progress. We're going to continue to have three separate silos who effectively do the same work across the community. And with no increase in productivity or jobs or, um, economic development. So that, that is, I feel very strongly about this, whether it's Alvin first or not. Something's got to change with economic development in the community where we have to be on the same page. And being a community of choice for business, being a community of choice for people who want to, who want to start their family, share their business here. And having three separate entities and long round conversations about how we can work together is not going to achieve that. So I stand firm in my commitment to making sure that we at least work together. I appreciate everyone's time tonight, um, in clarifying, um, certain positions and things like that that were helpful. Um, thank you, Mayor Snyder, for admitting taking that to the EDC, at least for another conversation, um, to really gauge what the differences are on this. Um, and I really want to thank the, the members, including current of the committee, because I don't know how anyone else feels about the last year. But everybody in this community, when we're going to tail off on all of their different projects, on all of their different, um, initiatives, even at times we couldn't be together. You know, whether it's phone, Zoom, six feet apart, apart, outside in a snowstorm. And these folks have been putting in hours to make sure they have a conversation about how we're going to make economic development better for this community. And I think it's a thankful shot clearly because we're here tonight, kind of having the conversation and stuff. Um, but it's worth it, we need to hold up the valuable and make sure that the value in it isn't hogged moving forward. So, thank you.
I'm sorry, question, Ron?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I just want to be, um, clear, I do know what point of order mean. So anyways, um, I, I'm just going to go back to the transparency because it's, it's just lingering on with me. And like I said, I did, um, say yes, because I did know that the DDA really didn't have any funds. I knew that we wasn't going to get paid for a lot of stuff because of the, um, the, uh, brownfield, um, projects that went on downtown and, um, but I'm, I'm really, I, I'm just not really saying a lot about what I heard in the last meeting that I attended at the DD, um, that, for DDA. So I guess from this point for me, um, I'm just going to be honest about it. I got trust issue, um, transparency comes, comes along with it. Um, and I'm just not feeling it. If you need my vote, then I guess you will help me with the transparency. If you don't need my vote, then I'm still stuck, stuck at, um, the transparency part. Um, it's nothing against nobody, everybody is professional. And I do understand that some boards do need professionalism on them. But, um, for me, it's, it's, it's just not sitting right. I, I, I've heard every aspect, um, of everybody's, um, way of saying how we can, um, tackle this transparency thing or whatever. But I, I, at this point, um, Ms. Mayor and Council, um, like I said, I, I don't, I'm just not feeling it because I've just got trust issues. And that's just me, nobody else has to have it, but, um, that's, that's where I'm at with it, ma'am. Thank you.
So, you know, a few weeks ago, when we sat here as a council, that was, you know, when we were talking about our goals and what we need to aim of goal. That was one of the main reasons why we really wanted to see this get pushed forward, because we know that, you know, we have limited funds, we have limited resources. We have, we want to be great things. We know how wonderful Alvin is and we want to be able to promote Alvin. But we find a way to do that because there's other avenues and resources that we could be tapping into to help us with promoting Alvin. So all of us here in council, we kind of agree that, yes, we do want to move forward, we want to be able to do something, have something that can drive these types of communications. So, um, I'm hoping that you guys are still in agreement with that, that, you know, in some fashion or another, it might not be Alvin first, but maybe, you know, kind of like we had said, putting Chamber, at least with the DDA, to move forward with their mission and goals so that we can at least start moving forward and then eventually, you know, look at something else that could help promote Alvin. So I know that, you know, this has been a lengthy discussion, it's been good conversations. Um, we appreciate, like Shane said, everybody being here to give your input, your thoughts, how this came to be, the information in the backstory. So, you know, we can definitely keep discussing, um, but I think at some point we need to make decisions, that's the limit.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Um, I remember this, and we had a guy in Malins, um, the fact that they're having, um, a lot of hearsay, a lot of rumors, a lot of understanding of backdoor deals, a lack of awareness that prompts this call for transparency regarding where the resources have been allocated. And so in the midst of that history, we're still living in a city where prior to the pandemic, according to the United Way, over sixty percent of our residents don't have access to basic meat. And we sit here talking about economic development and millions of dollars, and, and that's just a huge imbalance. And I think that we can't move forward and do anything that we're talking about without redressing those injustices. That, you know, in, in the wake of deindustrialization, what, what does a city do with our demographics? And I, I looked into this, there aren't many cities with our situation. Uh, but there are a lot of cities that have similar situations that we can really be intentional about how we are addressing what we are looking for. But I, I don't, I don't see that in the majority of the conversations that I see happening. And I, I mean, that, that we actually want to change this pattern that we have in our city, that has to be a focal point. That has to be a primary thing that is not compromised, that is not diluted, that is fundamentally a part of. And I'm talking about economic justice and, um, racial justice and environmental justice. We live in a city where I have friends and classmates who have died from cancer. Like those are things that we're not talking about. And I understand that's loaded, not putting that burden on anybody in this room. But I think collectively as a community, we have to be having these conversations, um, and incorporating that into how we drive economic development in a strategic, planned, comprehensive way, et cetera. And I think, yes, this is overdue.
So why do you see this being addressed?
I, I don't see it being addressed at all. And that's, and that's.
No, I think so, why would you just?
I think that it has to be part of community benefits agreements when we're looking at anything that would be created that is tied to human development. I think that in those agreements, they have to be very explicitly stated terms that have strong community partnerships. I think we, we lack the strong community partnerships because people lack tr- trust and faith in us to do our job. So there, there's a combination of factors that really have to be turned around. But until, as, as leaders, we open up and we have that discussion, it, it's just going to, people are going to continue to, um, not feel any sense of motivation to organize and be able to come to us with those clear directives. We can, we can try to comply to those ourselves, but it has to be driven by the community. So, question, Ron?
So I feel the same way, um, as, um, Councilmember Lenny is speaking. I just don't see a lot of this collaborative effort, it's going to benefit in any sort of way. Because there's still certain lines that's, that's been there, as Shane was saying, from the past, there's control and good things that Alvin can benefit from, and that all. And that's what, that's what mistrust is, and that's where the word transparency comes from. It's, it's, me myself personally, I'm tired, I'm tired. If I can, if I can do footwork to go out to try to win businesses, you know, and it's not my job, then I don't understand it in any other way. And I'm tired of it. So what, what I would like to see is I would like to see people that are saying that they don't have money for this or they don't have money for that. I would like them to see, review and see what they did on, because it falls on your table. And I would be grateful to go on forward without automatically adopting something else from somewhere else. And what they did, because it's so wonderful. Does that mean it's not working? Or does it mean, again, that we're going to build this sum and not? That's what I think.
Um, I just want to clarify that the Chamber, the Chamber's current financial situation has nothing to do with any sort of impropriety or bad, or bad decision making. Um, there was something called a pandemic that arrived in Michigan and the United States in March of twenty twenty. Um, and Chambers were actually, uh, roundly left out of all federal funding, um, for COVID relief. Whether that be paycheck protection, the IDL loans, any of the, um, the IDL lands that were given. Um, so think about, when we're thinking about a financial decision for a Chamber, uh, or a position for a Chamber, you have to remember that they're primarily made up of small businesses, all of which had to close for months, um, membership dues. And that they were completely left out of any sort of federal funding. So you lose your membership dues and you lose your federal funding. And then your, your passive, um, funding through the hotel accommodation tax is severely limited due to no one can travel because no one wants coronavirus. So for an entire year, um, through no, uh, effort on their own, the Chamber lost thousands upon thousands of dollars, just like tons of small businesses did in this community and all over. So I don't, I don't want there to be any, um, misinformation about why this is coming on. This is not out of desperation, um, this is the situation they're in now. Um, this is an opportunity that they were talking about before they were in this situation for years before that. Um, and so I just, I want to be clear. And I want to make sure, because I know, I know that the folks at the Chamber are working really hard to keep that organization alive. They're making sure that fireworks are happening this year, um, they're making sure that festivals are happening this year. They're, they're, and they're volunteering their time and energy. And if you saw them out there, I saw Randy Evans' friend, God love her, she was moving tables and chairs out of that building, making room for a displaced business that's going in there. Um, because another business that was displaced by a sale of their building, that was by no fault of their own, has to move downtown. So, um, again, thank you to the Chamber, um, because even in a time when they need that building and they need resources, they're giving up and moving along and finding solutions. And so I really appreciate the fact that the folks here tonight came with some solution focused, um, ideas and ways to move forward. So I just, I want to make sure, clarify that, the, the Chamber is the story of Alvin that we're not going to hear a lot about until later. And it's really sad how all of that funding worked out over the last year and how they were completely left out of it. Um, and so I think, I just want to make sure that everyone did a better for me.
Just a couple of questions or clarifications. Um, I'm hoping the conversation continues. Um, I can understand better, I'm new to the conversation, I'm new to the community. I think what we saw in the last chamber concern this about people around principles of democracy. That's part of, I think, the college's stronger stance around this. In terms of, um, in terms of term's exit, uh, the chairperson's exit, we were concerned about how that exit happened and reception around that, uh, exit, in terms of, uh, his role and his, you know, leadership role on the committee. And how that role was not renewed in the context of a vote against this. So that, that's A, I have to be really clear that that was a concern. It really had nothing to do with the merger, it had to do with the context of how we sort of support our volunteers and our committee chairs and in the context of freedom of speech and voting, uh, relative to, um, relative to that. That, that's A. And so, um, I think the second question we have is, Chambers oftentimes functions as PACs. They oftentimes support candidates, they oftentimes only take private funds. And so usually when these, uh, mergers happen, there's an isolation of those private funding sources. So in essence, Chamber is not naturally merged with the EDC. So just to pick a simple famous example of a merger, it's been well regarded, it's been successful. They were very careful in that merger to isolate the contiguous, the other organizations that primarily solicit their budgeting base from private funds, mainly because they got involved in other kinds of PAC issues, uh, other kinds of over support issues. And the EDC is a private, as a public entity, really need to sort of keep a separation. So many mergers actually are merging budgets. Uh, and so I'm not clear, as a new person with the conversation, the nature of the budget configuration in mergers. Because it's really important around the way that the demarcations get drawn in these mergers. So it, it might just be that I'm not up on that. And so I'd like to learn more about that, to look at the case for that. And then I think the third thing is that, uh, my intimation to Richard earlier is, I'm not sure we exercised full understanding of the statutes around, uh, the real estate questions that pertains to the EDC and the way in which we'll norm our privacy expectations and our, our confidentiality expectations relative to those statutes. I'd like to understand more about that as a new, as a new citizen and, and partner in this endeavor and I think college with too. We'd like to exercise an understanding about what that means, what the EDC's, uh, how the EDC's expectations around confidentiality pre-closing is vulnerable against state statutes or plans of particular or real estate. Um, and so that's another area of exploration. So, and then I think the fourth thing is, uh, we need to understand really the, the, the long-term outlook for these organizations. Sometimes organizations die, that's okay, because they did merge into sort of new organizations. So we really need to understand what the expectations are and the outlook for these other two organizations in terms of supporting merger. What's the, what is the proposition for them fiscally? Do we have expectations about what the horizons on the revenue numbers? If that makes any assessments, I haven't seen those. So I, I, me personally, I abstained from the vote because I didn't, I didn't feel like I was in a position to, uh, not to hedge bets or duck. But really, I just didn't have enough contacts in order to sort of represent the interests of the college. Or me as a citizen, uh, of this new community, in terms of how to support that. So I, I think right now we have to honor the vote of the EDC board and look forward as we sort of set forth. But I think it would be interesting and helpful to see some additional light on those kinds of questions. I may have two or three more that I'll think of after this, but I think that's, you know, those are the kind of things that I think would help at least me and the college, I think, understand better about the, the nature of this. Uh, so I, I appreciate being invited and, and given the opportunity to speak, but, but, uh, but that's where at least I stand in terms of the sort of the college. And I will say, I, we should not complain for our desire to have a healthier downtown with a merger in regards to three organizations. That, there are different issues, folks. And so we want a healthier downtown, we want economic development. The path forward doesn't necessarily entail that's the outcome of this merger. And we, I've obviously in my career around nonprofits for twenty-five years, lots of mergers, a lot of failures. Because in essence, you take one strong organization and you merge it with two weak ones, and all that does is function with act, act like an anchor on that stronger organization's net. And so, now, I'm not saying that's the case here, but, but I'm not convinced it's not. Till I see some numbers and understand what's going on. So I would ask that we get a package, we get some information to reflect on, which is more precise, and then help inform those of us who are in the conversation as we move forward. And I think that's fair, right? Uh, in terms of the request to the, to the group just proposing this as an option. In terms of the request to the, to the group just proposing this as an option. If, if it's that we've done all that work and I just haven't seen it, then, then I'm happier to see that work. I can understand that better.
I would, I would agree that Mr. Barkley is new to town and that he doesn't know a lot of the facts about the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce and where our funding comes from. I can assure you that it does not come from any sort of initial or any kind of other outside investment. I'd also like to point out very clearly, this is a service agreement. This is not a merger. The only institution that changes as part of this service agreement is the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce. If you read the agreement, the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce ceases to exist. Albion first, or whatever entity that gets named, becomes an entity. The Greater Albion Chamber Board dissolves and names two or three, is it three or four? Three or four people to the new board. The EDC and the DDA do not cease to exist, nor do their boards. They then assign their own representatives to the new board for Albion first. So I would just really like everybody to stop using the word merger because we're not asking the EDC and the DDA to change. They're not changing. They're entities of the city. They're not changing. It's the Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce that's changing. And we're okay with that. We're looking for a new opportunity and a new way to do, to do business. So let's go back and read and stop using the word merger about any of this because none of this is about a merger. None of it. This is about a service agreement to do services for the DDA and the EDC in conjunction with the work that the Albion Chamber is already doing. Can we, can we please, two hours into this meeting, recognize that this is not about a merger? And I'm sorry if I sound to the people who know me really well, a little hysterical. But this is just two hours of nonsense to sit here and say merger, merger, merger. I don't want to hear about a merger. I don't want to hear about neither. Because that's not what this is about. This is about a service agreement for these three organizations to work on some different economic development where this poor one hour's town. And if we'd like to do that and move forward, we'd like to do what the council was interested in doing. And that is how we spent a significant amount of time in December, January, and February this year. But if that's not what you want, fine. Fine. The Greater Albion Chamber of Commerce will continue to do some other type of business. Perhaps we will do something with the DDA as part of the service agreement that we've been working on so hard.
I'm going back to the previous conversation. And I, I think personally, as I sit on the EDC board, I'm in agreement because I don't, I think we need, my vote at an EDC meeting would be to continue to look at, what does this mean? I don't have enough information. I don't have enough facts. I don't know what this means. I don't know. And I think we should figure out the documentation, a white paper, whatever that looks like, the numbers, the facts, the figures, and get that in front of all of us before we make, you know, if I was sitting here right now, it wasn't, you know, I would say, I make a motion that we move forward in getting more information. Because I don't think we have enough, I don't have enough information to make an educated decision about whether or not the EDC should join this, what you call it, a service agreement. I don't have enough information to even vote on that.
So guess we can vote to move forward. Of course, it's voting to say, no, we're not interested. If you want that information, then move forward. That's, that's all we're asking. Are people interested in moving forward?
Right. So, so that's the point. You don't have to vote on this. Are people interested in this conversation? So that's what they want. The, the representatives from these organizations are saying, do you want us to still talk about this? Because we did say this was important, and we did it a couple of different ways. We did this before this council by saying, we want you all to have this conversation. And then when the EDC chair's renewal came up for going back on the EDC board, we said, we didn't say, we didn't want her to be on the board. We said, before we move forward with this approval, because I do think people have had a sudden zero vote, we said, we want to have this conversation right here. Because the understanding from many people on this council is that that conversation was happening in only one direction, and then it did not. And so this conversation's been helpful, and I think what these politicians are looking for, the council members, we don't have to vote, but we have to say, is there, are there people who still want them to talk about how they can work together? Because if we're not going to entertain it, if there's a majority of people sitting in this room who have voting power on the council, if you all are just running, no on this, then they don't want to waste any more time. So they want to hear from you to say, yes, I want to either go forward with the discussion to get more facts, like Ms. Norris pointed out, or no, forget it. And so if everyone can kind of weigh in, are you interested? I know I am. Everybody who's on council, can you weigh in and say, I'm interested in this conversation important? Give them some guidance. That way they know what they're working with. Because if it's just no, and they still go back to work on it, that's wasting their time.
I can confirm that all of you, to our, I do believe, I don't, I don't understand how it comes to all of you. But I do believe when I said that, that's basically what I was saying hopefully I was speaking for ones that don't know everything about it, is that all we want to know is have some more information. I mean, did I say that clear? Did I say that clear enough? I don't know. Maybe when I speak, I speak in real words or something because I say that, then I don't have a backing. Here. I don't have the backing when I say that. And I need to have that backing, and I believe we still would be here when I mentioned that. Because I know I ain't wanting no merger. I know exactly what this is, okay? I said that over 45 minutes ago or so. We need to have clarity, and that was this trend, or whatever you want to call it. I, what are we doing? Is it best for Albion? You feel that it's best for Albion? Give us some information. We all will look at it. And then we can come to that point to vote on it. And that's where I'm at. And I hope I'm speaking for them, then whoever's going to be there will. Because I, once again, I, I thank you all for coming. I thank you for allowing us to know and understand what we wanted to know. Because I'm going to speak for myself, and I agree with the attorney back here. I'm sorry that I can't say his name.
Ray Blackford.
Huh? Ray. I felt bad.
The law attorney.
But anyway, I feel bad. I feel bad. I feel bad that when I said anything about her because I didn't bring it clear, okay? I just wanted to know what information that I wanted to know way before he put his application back in. What was the reason behind of having an Albion first, okay? That's all I needed to know. I never ever want anybody to think I would go against someone speaking of how they feel or what they want to do. You have the right to say whatever you want to, whenever you want to. And I believe in that. And that hurt me so bad to find out that he didn't want to vote for because of the things that he heard, things that he felt, or however it may be, okay? I believe in free speech. Well, that's why I'm going to say, just be quiet because I don't want to continue to go. But that's all I need. Just give me some information. Bring me some, I mean, firm information, dollars and cents yesterday. Go ahead.
So I, I just wanted to say that Kelly Stott, who's the county administrator, had offered two different times to come talk to the EDC. I could, I could try to walk my way through the financial piece of this, but I wouldn't give her a bar. I would actually love to have Kelly and Dr. Park talk to each other because I think they speak the different languages that I don't speak. But she understands how this all fits together as part of her county role. She looked very hard across the county because every one of these taxes, the financial districts, pull money from local governments, right? So the, so the tax dollars will go to the EDC. If it wasn't pulled from the EDC, it would go to this city, Albion, to the schools, go to the county. And so part of what she did was make sure she understood how that all worked, looked at it very closely, developed a policy, told her attorney to develop the policy on how you would arrange these agreements going forward. Now, when you ask the county to just flat give up their, their tax, they come back and they say, eh, we will give up 25%, maybe we'll give up 50%. And they, they negotiate those things because frankly, once you give those up, it's like the EDA, it's gone for 10 years, 15 years, is a severe variable experience. So I, I would encourage, Kelly is a resource. I would encourage you to, I think I'm hearing councilmember Jackson say, do you want some more information? I tell you, she is absolutely willing to do that. I'm suggesting for her, she understands how this all fits together. I would encourage very few to reach out to her, connect you with her. I'm sure you're talking to Robert also.
And councilmembers, do you have any other comments?
I just want to say that I appreciate everybody coming in. I appreciate all that as far as what I was speaking about. I was, I wasn't pointing at today. I was pointing at it's been a history. And that's what I've been saying for a while. I can say the change, it's been a history. So we got to this point because of the history of Albion. But I'm not, I'm not spontaneous. I'm just like what Norris said. I need to know why we're doing this and make sure that it is for the benefit of Albion. Because again, I'll say it one more time. We're not marching. We're not marching. We're not that a creep. All of those other places have multiple businesses and multiple amounts of money that is coming in. And it's more, they're just building on the things that want stable and making them more safe. We're not even there. So, you know, my thing is, we have had a history. I have a problem with people having to eat with the EDC. I would see where that's a problem. It's a problem until it happens. That's what can be killed. If it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. So, you know, at this point, honestly, I don't see the real reason to do it unless I can do something good.
I'm同意.
I'm going to bring in the lawyer in this process, and I'll talk to them. And I look like they have no information.
So it's been discussed enough, and then we're going to wrap it up here. Can we have anybody else to comment on it?
Mayor, just one comment. Having an open attitude, I just want to collect it as a committee person for the EDC. We would welcome additional detailed information for us to review and analyze the situation. The EDC not being part of it, that's fine. The other groups go ahead. I'm understanding things that the doctor has said are critical for any of us making a logical set of decisions. And, and it's, it's, it's almost humorous, the kind of decision process we were starting down, right? The doctor has made some very significant points. And I will tell you, there are folks on the EDC who are afraid to say anything. The same job they be in, when they're about to shift positions, they be in question. That's no fun for anyone, right? So we, we give you information, critically, good faith. So, who votes?
Councilmember.
My comment is, the vote taken by council was very clear. It was to delay Mr. Hall's approval until we had this conversation. There was no way, an effort to remove him from that role. The fact that Mr. Hall decided he was going to quit and resign was a decision on his own, of his own doing, and that was his choice. Leadership in this town is a dangerous job, and I can understand why some might quit and go home. But I come here every time there's a council meeting, and inevitably, during the whole comment or even before, at the beginning or at the end of this meeting, someone says something not nice about me. Or someone says something disagreeable that I don't like. And I sit here and I smile, and I come back every time I do the job that I have left to do. And while I get paid a very small stipend to sit and speak, we all know that we put a ton of hours into it. And that's what these volunteer board members are doing. Leadership is tested when you have to answer hard questions. The decision to quit and resign and not come to council and answer questions with his committee members, that was Mr. Hall's choice. Never a leadership decision that Mr. Hall made. He's the distinguished leader. He should have been here tonight explaining what was going on because he was part of this committee. And so, this is, sorry, this is, this is kind of, I know I have a comment.
Shane, Shane, if you say what you said about him in the council meeting, I won't be here.
You know, I would every time.
You go ahead. You go ahead. You can add to the comments.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Garrett Brown, 1016 South Spur Street. Councilmember Williamson, I'm about to say something disagreeable. The, the problem here, I think, I think Councilmember Lennew hit everything on the head. The problem is, in, in one year to the day of George Floyd's death, we are still grappling with inequality and basically effects of white supremacy. And historically, in Albion, it's been an old boys' club on these boards. So I get that the chamber is running out of money. And I get that the different operations that the Dobbins families run, it would benefit them to have a more streamlined process. But none of that, none of that compares to the citizens' rights to have access to documents through FOIA and attend meetings through the Open Meetings Act, right? So what, what I hear is, it's a lot of misdirection and whatnot going on. But no one even answered, really answered, Councilmember Lawler's initial question. Whose idea was this? Because if, I, I, I attended pretty much all those meetings through Zoom last year, and Mayor Atchison really tried to put it off for more information. So he was not championing this, right? So the question needs to be, who's pushing it and who does it benefit? Now, yes, streamlining some things help. But the problem is, I think, the manner in which this has even come before council is, is evident of the insularity of the decision-making process that would result if this was adopted, right? So right now, you, you, Councilmember Williamson, you worked for the Dobbins in a consulting role. Your wife and your mom are on the chamber board. You're pushing this, right? So I could easily say, well, what's, what's the, what's the motive behind that? And then Amy DePray has made a very good point. The budget they have right now is just enough to do what they need to do. So if you add on these other stuff, and if, if the other entities can't afford staff to do that, who's going to afford to do that in the EDC if they're just getting by? You know, it's, it's almost as if you're, you're, you have three friends. One person has some money, the other two people are going bankrupt, and you're asking to go into business with each other. So the, the, the issue here is, the issue here is, one, the council needs to ask, where did the idea come from? And who's going to benefit from it? Because the problem, I've said all along these past, you know, three, four years, is that economic development in Albion is becoming very incestuous, right? You have Scott Evans at Homestead. He's on the EDC board. He's on the, the, the chamber board, giving loans to Dobbins. And, and Dobbins is contributing to Atchison, and he's appointing Dobbins kids to the DDA boards and the boards of review and stuff like that. So that's, that's the real conversation that needs to be happening. This is a power grab, and it's not in line with what Councilmember Lennew said is the core. The issue is, how do we increase the fact that Albion has poverty and has a workforce issue? That's the issue, right? Because each, everyone I've heard speak, they have a particular angle. When Ms., when, when.
I was up there.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, can you hear us? I can hear you. Can you hear me? Go ahead. Okay, thank you. Sony Brown, 713 Orchard Drive. I just want to address one of the many microaggressions that I heard during this conversation. Councilmember Williamson stated that just because you don't get a seat at every table doesn't mean you're getting excluded from the table. But when you're telling me I don't even get to see the table or see who's at the table, then I'm absolutely being excluded from the table. So the issue of transparency in this situation is critical. I think we know what it looks like when there are closed-door conversations that people aren't privy to. And there's also a saying that says, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. So I really hope, I heard that you've been talking about addressing the transparency issue, but that hasn't stopped the conversation on continuing to make this happen. And it is my hope that because transparency is an issue, that you would halt, address that before you move on. Secondly, and quickly, the EDC's position is really important, and I don't want it to get overlooked. They are maintaining, and it's unfortunate that the pandemic, you know, depleted some of the financial stability from the chamber. And the DDA has been struggling for a while, to my knowledge. And the DDA has been struggling for a while, to my knowledge, financially. Um, but, and I heard, this is not a merger. But what it feels like to me, and Rick, you can appreciate this, is the EDC resources are attempting to be annexed and used for the other two entities. So do some research, um, address the issue. And I don't see how this is beneficial to Albion and the greater community of Albion. Thank you.
Do we have, um, Tim Anderson? Yes, I just have a few things to announce. Just want to thank everyone for, um, taking the time, our dear evening, to join us tonight. I'm just trying to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed Monday, uh, May 30th, President's of Memorial Day. I would encourage everyone to come out and attend the Memorial Day parade that will be given at noon. Um, also, uh, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission may have released a survey. It is live now. Um, a link can be found on the city's website, as well as the link of our copies here. Please encourage any and everyone to, um, take the time to complete the survey. We are looking to get feedback to better plan for our park space and recreation programs in here in our community. So really, please encourage anyone, um, to take the time to, um, complete that survey. I will also say that we have reached out here to know the venture, because the commission made it very clear they want to hear the feedback from the parents and children here in our community. So we have provided hard copies to sit home with all of the elementary students. Um, they will be delivered to the Shell boarding tomorrow morning. Um, if council members feel like hard copies to distribute within the precincts, let me know. And I will make sure that those are available. We'll get that, this is all we have. Councilmembers? Yes.
So since I didn't get the same, the one thing that I just want to highlight our council is, as a matter of parliamentary procedure, the way that it's supposed to work, because there were several points of order called tonight. So this other council is all on the same page. When a council member calls a point of order, they state what their point of order is. There shouldn't really be any argument with each other. Or it's, you state the point of order, and then you wait for the mayor to rule on that point of order. Because that's, as the chair, that's what the mayor does. Should that, should the mayor overrule the point of order, council member can then, uh, vote to appeal to the remaining members of council. Should that bill be seconded, then the remaining members of council can then choose to overrule the mayor. But it's kind of turned into a liberal free-for-all that I think the council should be mindful of. And so regardless of who's calling the point of order, that's, when that happens, the conversation should stop. And everyone should kind of look to the mayor, who can certainly consult with the city attorney, if she needs to, about the point of order. Just so everyone, everyone in the council is clear, that's how the parliamentary procedure is supposed to be.
All right, so I will adjourn meeting at 8:16 PM. Oh, I'm sorry. I have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion to adjourn. Go on. Second? How was everybody, was that?